Call this school committee meeting to order. Would you all please join me if you can and pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Apparently the principal of MKG didn't even take a seat to look there.
Okay, first on this evening's agenda is a reorganization of our committee. I hope that you saw, I received today the official letter from Zeke, from the town clerk, that stated his resignation as of November 1st. And for that reason, also in the drive, you saw, I put a copy of our policies that govern how we reorg when there is a resignation. And Jess, you'll be very proud of me that I'll be able to say it is policy BDA, School Committee Organizational Meeting, and that we follow the same procedures that we do for the beginning of the year. And so with that, I am serving as the chair for now, as the vice chair in Zeke's absence. So first order of business is to call for nominations for the role of chair of school committee. Alan?
I'd like to nominate Jess as chair.
Do I hear any seconds? Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Sue Panini.
Do I hear any seconds? One more time, I need to ask, do I hear any further nominations? Actually, before I do that, because I have been nominated, I'd like to release my role as chair to Alan.
All right, just as point of order, you can second your own nomination, if you'd With that, do I hear any other nominations for the role of chair? All right, we'll start with the first nomination. All those in favor of Jess, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor, oh, well, actually, that's it. We didn't have a second on the other nomination, so. Jess, you are now chair.
Okay.
Now, up to you. I would switch seats and then call for nominations for vice chair.
Certainly. Thank you, Alan.
Oh, I left my pens down there.
Yeah, I left all my books down there, too.
Be careful with all that stuff.
Here, Mom, that's a lot of paper. I'm just... In your treat.
That wasn't mine.
Oh, it is now.
Thank you for the nomination. I am honored by the opportunity to serve as the facilitator and the organizer for the committee. And I guess the first order of business is for nominations for the position of vice chair. Do I hear any nominations for vice chair? I'd like to nominate Sue Panini.
Second.
Any other nominations? All right, all those in favor of Sue as vice chair?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe that's unanimous.
I abstain.
You abstain, thank you. So, four and an abstention. Chris? Dosi doh. Would you like to stay put for now, Sue?
I'll just push Sue over. I think we can say what we want to say.
Stay put, all right. Just for the wrap-up, the only other role we have is our clerk, who is currently Christine Brune. I would accept nominations for secretary clerk. I believe we've renamed it clerk in our policy, so clerk?
So moved.
To retain Christine as chair. Second? Second. Any additional nominations? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Unanimous, all right. Sue, because you helped set the agenda and organize this meeting, I will rely on you heavily throughout this meeting to help facilitate. So, thank you for putting this on. Was there anything else you had when you planned the organizational meeting to vote on?
Nope.
Great, thank you. All right, so the next order of business is filling of vacancy. And I know Sue has that policy as well, but that one is B, 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 C. Currently, we have it combined with, I think it's B, 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 E. But the policy itself does state the process that we need to fill, that we need to follow for filling a vacancy. And basically, we've received a written notice, and within a month, we have to officially notify the select board. And then, we have a meeting where anyone who is interested in filling a candidate, we are able to proceed with a joint meeting or a joint vote, dependent upon how we choose to structure the process, in collaboration with the select board. Sue, I believe you've spoken with the select board already?
I have.
Would you care to just give us an update on your discussion?
Sure. What I did was I contacted Mark and Teresa and had a conversation about just how the policy works, so that we try to assure that we move together in concert, that we had a similar understanding. And they were excited about working together on this. One of the recommendations that I would have as a result of that conversation is that you sit down with them and talk about procedurally, first, how we go about together seeking applicants and setting up the process for how we would take those in. The policy itself is a little unclear with that one week, the one-week notification. As I said, it was today that we received the official notification that, as is stated in the policy from the clerk, that they also received officially. So as far as timing is concerned, I think that the language is a little bit vague enough that we can set up a timeline that makes sense, that we're really advertising and allowing people to express their interest, get whatever materials, and then go forward with the meeting to interview and take the vote.
Okay. Sue, I would like to invite you to continue to participate in that process with me if you're interested in meeting with the select board to work through it. I do know from discussing with MASCE that there are some options that we can consider with the select board of either creating like an ad hoc subcommittee, so that we could have two members from the school committee and the select board conduct the interviews and make a recommendation back to a joint meeting of the boards, or we could do everything just as a full joint meeting of the boards. So that'll be something that we want to come to an agreement with, with the select board.
And amongst ourselves.
Yep.
You know, whether everyone wants to participate in that process or whether it be a subcommittee, agreed.
So with that being said, just a brief discussion, if, to make sure that going into any discussion with the select board, that we know opinions of the full school committee. Would you prefer to go in and have a candidate's interview process with the full board or with a subset? It would have to be two from each board.
Are you asking all of us?
Yep. What would you prefer? Please, um...
I think I've mentioned this to a few people, but I think five, I think remaining at five until the next election is probably the best way to go. If that's not possible, I understand, but there was a motion at town meeting by a member of the select board to reduce the school committees to five. And we had a motion at the town meeting to go to seven, to avoid the three-on-three. So we have an opportunity at five now to go until the next town election. I think that would be the most prudent way to go. But if, I'm the only one who thinks that way, or if I'm in the minority, that's, I completely understand, and then, yeah.
Opinion-wise, I totally understand your opinion. I'm just looking at what the letter of the law says in terms of filling the vacancy. We can definitely check with, I would probably need to be the town lawyer and our lawyer since the motion was made at town meeting for the increase in August. But right now, the policy does state that if there is a vacancy, it must be filled, and if we do not have the meeting to fill it within 30 days, then it can be filled, so, within the 30 days and the week. If we don't notify it within 30 days, then it can be filled, so.
But yeah, I think that, I would appreciate that we have that discussion about the five or the seven with the select board as well.
We can do that with the select board.
Can we have that conversation here first, of what we want to do, five or seven?
So I don't think the option...
Oh, okay. I thought you said, I thought she was just referring it to the selectmen. I think it'd be good to hear other people's thoughts on that.
Well, the question is, the going up to seven is what was already motioned for at the town election. So that's a separate discussion than filling the vacancy at a certain point. Filling the vacancy, there is the regulation that we need to follow, but we can absolutely discuss with the select board if, because it's vague, as you said, Sue, you know, if we don't have the meeting and they don't nominate someone, then we don't have a candidate. So I do think it's one of those things that it's vague enough that we just have to be careful about how we proceed with that.
I just want to be really clear, I'm not really emotionally invested in this. If we go another route, that is fine with me. I don't have any problem with going to six till, I mean, we've been doing six for how many years now?
So the question, thank you. So the question I posed was, when, if we do have the interviews of the candidates to choose a candidate to recommend, would you prefer that we do all five of us, all five of the select board, and everybody gets one vote, and we, all 10 of us, interview the candidates? Or that we have an ad hoc subcommittee of the school committee and an ad hoc subcommittee of the select board, so two and two, that would conduct the interviews and make a recommendation, that would then come back to the full meeting of the school committee and select board joint meeting to vote upon that recommendation? So do you prefer all five of us to interview candidates or a subcommittee? I mean, I personally prefer for all of us to be part of that process.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I agree also.
Great. So that's something that when we go to the select board to have the discussion, we know that we would prefer for a full committee meeting. So I appreciate knowing everybody's opinions so that we can share that when we have the joint discussion. I'm sorry, Sam, I'm moving my microphone.
Could we follow up, though, on Alan's request?
Yes, I need to check with legal.
Even before we check with legal, it might, may or may not be something we want to do. I would recommend, I guess my point being this, no matter what, I think we should fill the position now. There's enough work to go around that I think it also would give somebody an opportunity that wants to run, to get their feet wet. So I really feel that we should fill the position.
Okay. Any other opinions? Okay, thank you, appreciate that. So with that being said, we will obviously bring this back. It will be a time-sensitive meeting. It would be lovely, I think, with the way everything times out, to have enough information that we can proceed, so, within the month. Plan to hear more as soon as we can get more information. So the next order of business on the agenda is public comment. Any speakers for public comment? Thank you. I just appreciate just one moment, because new to this, just want to remind everyone, approximately three minutes for your comment. Thank you.
I should be done by then. John Burbage, 2406 Green Street, the current elected president of the Oak Point Homeowner Scholarship Fund. I'm here just to talk for a second about the success of our yard sale recently. I hope some or all of you had a chance to be there. We netted about $46,000, in case you hadn't heard, all of which is earmarked for the Middleborough class of 26. That is usually a fraction of what we give. We will be meeting as an organization. Our annual meeting is this Sunday. We'll be voting on our gift to the class. As I told Principal Branigan, we'll be notifying the high school, BP Tech, and Bristol Aggie of how much in scholarships and toolships they'll be receiving. And we will announce that to the town at the select board meeting on the 17th. I expect Kathley Lenatra, Norman Oral, and Kelly Dooner all to be there for this. I've been doing this now for four, going on four years as the president. We've been pretty successful in growing this. I've had a number of white whales that I've been chasing. I've accomplished all but one so far, and next year, I'm going to be full-bent on that. And that's, I don't understand why any of the major television stations haven't come out to cover a senior community that's the biggest source of financial aid to the town that it resides in. Just, if you know anybody, because I do too, and I've been knocking on their doors, but I'm stunned that they haven't been out to do a Positively Massachusetts, a Game Changers, or something about the Oak Point community. I hope that all of you will be at least watching. If you don't come to the meeting on the 17th, I promise you, you'll be shocked. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And as always, we continue to thank you for all of the efforts of the Oak Point community. So thank you. Any other speakers for public comment?
Yes, Bridgette Kearns. I'm going to ask this committee to send policies AC, ACA, ACAB, and ACE back to the subcommittee for review and revote for their approval. In particular, the policies nondiscrimination on the basis of sex and disability had substantial changes that were presented as minor changes that should be looked at more closely. These two protected classes have standalone policies. The function of these policies appear to establish procedure around additional protections that these two groups have under federal law, those being Title IX and Title II under ADA. The red flag I saw was when you struck the line in accordance with Title IX and then inserted sexual orientation and gender identity, because in doing so, you're telling me that you're writing a policy that is not in accordance with Title IX. This policy is not a general declaration of what the district does not discriminate against, but rather one that directs the school on how to carry out Title IX procedures. Sexual orientation and gender identity in this policy is arbitrary, as sex is a protected class in its own right and is not coupled with any other class inherently. The confusion is likely a reflection of changes made by the Biden administration but were vacated by a federal court in January. So it's unreasonable that this is being passed in October. This policy was reviewed by Jessica, as well as Title IX investigator Kevin Ametabaly and the legal counsel back in May. And as Title IX investigator, you should have known, but certainly your legal counsel should have advised you differently. They failed to be your failsafe again, and I call on you to remove them as your counsel. Leaving these two groups in this policy only serves to confuse and misrepresent what nondiscrimination on the basis of sex covers. This policy should be written so that it is clear for everyone. As a parent, I want to know that all staff, including the Title IX investigator, are not giving deference to sexual orientation or gender identity when investigating cases of sex discrimination. I continue to be deeply concerned about the way handbook language, school committee, and school policies are being written to mislead people, from staff, parents, students, through the inclusion and misapplication of the wrong law to the misrepresentation of what protected classes are included under nondiscrimination on the basis of sex. To be clear, everyone is protected by Title IX when they experience discrimination on the basis of being male or female. This does not take rights away from anybody. Each time I stand her, after untangling a complex web of lies, misrepresentation, coercive actions, I'm left questioning the motives of the people who are directing them, writing them, reviewing them, and passing them. Your position on this committee is not to advance some social justice agenda, it's to set an example to any of our students. It does not set an example to our students when you quietly manipulate policy. It only serves to create more division in this community. I'm calling for radical transparency and accountability from this committee moving forward. No more sweeping things under the rug or leaving the new superintendent to swap out the wrong law with the right law with zero explanation.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kim Jones, 79 Clay Street. Just here to hear what you're going to speak about later on with another five resignations from the school committee, well, not school committee, the schools. I do have concerns with that. I was happy to see that there were five new employees that were replacing it, but again, all we've got to do is look 15 miles down the road at Whitman and the mess that they're in with finances and teachers leaving, and I just hope the school really takes a look at this closely and maybe even, unfortunately, take an opportunity from another school who's losing staff to maybe enhance our school program. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the discussion items. First order of business is a report from student representatives, Jackson and Mesa.
All right, so our first announcement is district-wide. Just a reminder that there's no school on the 11th for Veterans Day and no school the 26th to the 28th for Thanksgiving break.
Let's move to the MECC. The kindergartners had their first field trip of the year. They, it was on Wednesday and Thursday, and they went to the Benson's Pond Cranberry Bog. So they got some hands-on experience in learning about the Middleborough's historical roots in cranberries. The MECC word of the month for November is gratitude, and students and staff are talking about things that they are grateful for. And picture retake is November 19th, for anyone who missed a picture who wants a retake.
All right, and then for MKG, Principal White just wants to extend a thank you to everyone that contributed to the MKG fundraiser. It was a huge success. And also a thank you to any PTA and the volunteers for supporting the students. The fundraising goal was met, so Principal White is going to be duct taped to the wall by the grade-three students.
Nice.
MKG picture retake day is November 18th. And just a reminder that parent-teacher conferences are held the week of November 17th, if you have not already received information from your child's teacher about scheduling an
So at the HBB, they had a great spirit week from October 27th to the 31st. Monday was wear a Halloween shirt day. Tuesday was crazy hair day. Wednesday was pajama day. Thursday was wear black and orange day. And on Friday, they wore their Halloween costumes to end the week in style. And they want to thank everyone who supported the PTA's pie and cookie fundraiser. They raised a lot of money, and you can pick up your goodies November 17th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, in the HBB main lobby. The big blast is tomorrow, the 7th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We'll have games, food, and just some good fun. There is a cost for tickets, which is $20 at the door, I believe. And November 17th through the 20th is parent-teacher conference week, and they look forward to meeting with parents.
All right, not a lot from NMS. Just a reminder that parent-teacher conferences are taking place on the 19th and the 20th.
So to move on to the high school, we want to congratulate the Student Council and Speech and Theater Workshop for their outstanding job and collaboration in hosting the new annual Halloween Fun Fest last week. This is the second time we have collaborated. And this year, we had our haunted hallway put on by SCW. We had the games and the crafts for the kids in the rotunda and cafeteria for, put on by the Stuco. And we also had a carved pumpkins display with games from the Middleborough Performing Arts Booster Club. So congratulations and thank you to everyone who helped with that. The New England Association of Schools and Colleges, called NIASC, completed their dicennial, is that how you say it? I think that's right, accreditation visit on October 29th, 27th through the 29th. And job well done to the entire student body and staff. Special thank you to Atlee Finney, Nina Travers, Natalie Corey, and Alex Cosimian for serving as tour guides to the NIASC visiting team. Thank you to the many students who participated in the focus groups and student showcase during the NIASC visit. I walked around and I managed to see a few of them before they were presenting, and it seemed to, like, every single area of the school was covered. And I managed to speak with Principal Branigan last night, and he said he could not have been more proud of our school. He thinks we did exactly what we needed to do, and the visiting team was extremely impressed by the student body as well as the faculty and staff. He also would like it to be known that the school still has room for improvement, and he will take the recommendations to heart, and we'll work to be better at our next visit. Once he has the official report and can share it out, there will be more to come on that. The Class of 2026 had an amazing senior mystery ride on Tuesday of last week. It ended up being a trip to Bodaborg, which is a physical/mental escape room place in Malden. I know a few people came away with some nice bruises, but a lot of smiles. Middleborough High School Performing Arts Department is proud to present Hades Town Teen Edition. This musical adapts classical Greek mythology into a meaningful and heart-wrenching story about love, loss, and what happens when doubt comes in. Shows will be on Friday, November 21st, and Saturday, the 22nd. Both will be 6:30 PM. And a Sunday matinee on the 23rd at 3:00 PM. Tickets will be $10, they are sold at the door. And for, I think, the first time, we have online ticket sales through GoFan. So that's exciting. And to conclude for known events at the high school, the Thanksgiving Spirit Week will be coming up. It will be running from November 17th through the end of that week, and then November the 24th and the 25th, before we go on break. I will conclude with our annual pep rally, which will be on the 25th during School Day. And we are adding a new decorating contest this year. It's not really new, it used to be something that was huge at the high school, but faded out over time. And each grade will be decorating a different area of the school with a theme that they picked out at our student council meeting last night. So we're excited to see how that turns out.
All right, and then we're moving on to any major wins or events in athletics. Girls' soccer had their senior night against Rockland on the 27th, ending with a score of 2 to 1 and securing the win. Boys' soccer played their senior night against Bristol Plymouth just three days later on the 30th. Football also had their senior night on the 30th, as well as securing the win with a score of 2013. And with that win, they made the playoffs as the 15th seed in the Division IV MIAA tournament. Powder puff is starting up, so please sign up as soon as possible if you would like to participate in that event, whether as a player or a cheerleader. And if you do want to be a player, please order a shirt by this Sunday, the 9th, from the link sent out, as it is required to participate.
Is that everything?
Yep.
All right. And just a plug, that Hades Town does have both of our student reps in it, so please consider attending, just so that we have a lively discussion available at our December meeting with them. So thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Next order of business is a superintendent's report.
Good evening. To start, we have a MCAS presentation by Dr. Markulinas. If you would come up.
Good evening, Chair Chartoff and the rest of the school committee. Thank you for having me in this evening. I'm looking forward to sharing our MCAS, I can only see close with these and not far, so I'm going to take them off so I can say hi to everybody. I'm looking forward to sharing our MCAS data with all of you this evening. There's a lot of information, it's very dense. If you can hold off on questions until the end, I would appreciate it. Hey, Sam, it's not moving.
Are you going in through your phone?
Yeah. Thanks. Okay, so I'm just going to go over the agenda. I'm going to provide a brief explanation of the Department of Elementary and Secondary's education's accountability process, which is very confusing, so I'll try to simplify it. very confusing, so I'll try to simplify it as best I can. I'm going to give an overview of our data, talking about our areas of strength and our opportunities for growth. I'm going to share with you some data-driven decisions that we have been making, and then there will be an opportunity for questions. Okay, moving into the accountability from the Department of Education. So I did explain this last year. I'm going to run through it again because it is confusing. So the state has two categories for accountability. One is districts and schools requiring assistance or intervention, and the other one is those districts and schools not requiring assistance or intervention. So that's a pretty simple idea, but the way they figure out whether or not you need intervention or support is through their criterion-referenced target percentage. And this combines multiple years of data related to achievement, growth, high school completion, English learner progress, advanced coursework completion, and chronic absenteeism. And the state looks at that over years. The accountability percentile, the number is an indication of the school's overall performance relative to schools, other districts that serve similar grades, and as I mentioned, multiple years for all accountability indicators. The next slide is actually our overall progress towards our improvement targets. When you look at this, it seems very strange that last year we had 70% towards our target percentage and 29 this year. Overall, we were 45%, which means we made moderate progress towards our targets. You might be wondering why we dropped from 70% to 29. And it is because we did so well last year that they significantly raised our targets. And so because of that, we received a lower score. Next year, our targets will be different, and we will have a higher score. It is how the state does it. I'm going to move into an overview of the data. And I'm going to start with our access data. So our access data, we've been doing access testing for, geez, I think probably 15 years. We've just recently started reporting out on it. Federal and state laws require that English learners be assessed annually to measure their proficiency in reading, writing, listening, and speaking English, as well as the progress they are making overall in learning English. Students are able to test out of the EL program when they earn a 3.9 in literacy on the access test and a 4.2 overall. The scores that follow on the next page include all of our EL students or MLL students, multilingual learners, who were part of the program as of January 2025. We had 82 students who sat for the access test, a 95% participation rate, which is really wonderful. And I think the greatest part of this is that 59% of our students made progress, significant progress, and the majority of our students are falling within the developing and expanding range for their overall score. On this slide, we have our ML teachers throughout the district. We have one in each school. We hold ML nights twice a year so that we can increase our outreach to community members to enhance the education experience for all students. We had about 60 families come this year, and we hosted it at the Middleborough Public Library so that we could also provide exposure to other resources that are available in our community. All right, I'm going to dive into English Language Arts MCAS test, but before I do that, I want to explain how I'm going to present the data. So we compare our data to the state, which provides us crucial context. It helps us identify areas for improvement, and it serves as a benchmark for accountability. The state average provides a baseline for us to measure our performance. The analysis of this data allows us to pinpoint specific subject areas, certain grade levels, and/or subgroups where the district excels or faces challenges. For each of the content areas, I will present the data for all students, and then I will parse out the data for students with disabilities so we can ensure equity, accountability, and targeted support. So in ELA, the percentage of our students who are meeting or exceeding is what this graph shows. In grade three, we are on par with the state. 43% of our students were exceeding or meeting. And you can see in grades four through eight, we are slightly below the state. In grade 10, we are just above the state. In ELA, the percentage of students with disabilities meeting and exceeding. As you can see from this graph, this is an area that we know we have some work to do, and we are doing it. I don't want you to think that you're looking at these numbers, and they are just numbers. These are our students, and we are making sure that the instruction and the curriculum that we are giving them meets their needs. Math MCAS. So it looks pretty similar to English. In grade three, we have 45% of our students who were meeting or exceeding the standard, which was slightly above the state. And then you will see the dip in grades four through eight. And then again, we are above the state in grade 10. For our students with disabilities in math who are meeting and exceeding the standard, grade four was our standout here, and we will be looking to see what they did to get those results, because it's pretty impressive in a year when we had a new test. The state partnered with a new provider. The test has changed. We were prepared for it, but until we actually sit and see all of the questions, we don't know exactly what is coming at our students other than teaching to the standards, which we do. I'm going to move into science, technology, and engineering. I'd like to remind you that this test is grade five, grade eight, and grade 10. Grade 10 is actually biology, but it's included in this grouping. Grade eight and grade 10 did very well. Grade five is the culmination of three, four, or five. Grade eight is six, seven, eight, science. So they have a lot of standards to cover in those years. And our students with disabilities, it looks pretty much like we have seen in all the other content areas, and we are aware of the work that we have to do. The state introduced a new MCAS last year, and that is civics, which is taken at grade eight. Just for your reference, our eighth-grade students take four content area tests. It's significant. And so when I look at this, this is the first year we took it, but this is a lot on our eighth-grade students, and I just think we need to appreciate that. It's also a lot on the educators. It's a lot of work. So the percentage of students meeting or exceeding, slightly below the state there, and then our students with disabilities, again, slightly below the state. I am not going to walk us through all of the comparisons. It is there for you to look at, but I do want to take you through the first slide so I can provide an explanation for our community about what these slides actually mean. So all of this information is available on Desi's website. If you go into the Accountability Report from Middleborough, you can find that there. If you have any questions, please reach out to me. I'm happy to answer them. So when I talked about our MCAS performance, I only talked about students meeting or exceeding the standard. In these graphs, for all of our tested grades, this includes all of the domains. So you will see exceeding is in the blue, meeting is in the green, partially meeting is in the orange, and not meeting is in the red. This is a four-year comparison that the state provides us. You will notice it goes up, and it goes down, and it goes up, and it goes down. It is consistent in that way. We are never too far. Please notice that the orange bucket, for lack of a better word, the partially meeting, is a place where we focus a lot of energy, because sometimes those students are one point away from meeting the standard. And so we really dig deep into this data, and we look at how can we move those students into that meeting bucket and out of the partially meeting bucket. We do the same with the not meeting, ideally to move them into the meeting, but always happy when we move them into the partially meeting, knowing that we're making progress and our students are experiencing growth. I'm going to just quickly run through the next slide so that you can get an idea that it looks pretty similar in grades three through 10. English is on the left, math is on the right. This is grade four. Grade five. Grade five, science and technology. Grade six, ELA in math. Grade seven, ELA in math. Grade eight. Science and technology in grade eight. I did not include civics because it was the first year we took the test. There's no comparisons. Grade 10, ELA in math. And grade 10, science. So we are very data-rich, but that is really not the point. We don't ever want to just stay with the data. What do we do with the data? I want to talk about some commendations that our district should be celebrating. So we had consistent performance on MCAS tests at all levels when compared over the last three years. Grades three and 10 are on par with the state in ELA. Grade three and, grade three and 10 outperform the state in math. Students with disability in grade four outperform the state in math. We outperform the state on science and technology in grades eight and 10. High school testing remained consistent despite the fact that MCAS exam, the MCAS exam, no longer counts towards graduation. I do want to stress that it still counts in our accountability rating. So it's really important that our students still sit for that. It also gives us a great deal of data for which to plan our instruction and our curriculum. We do have a high participation rate on the MCAS test at all grade levels. So opportunities for growth. We always want to sit here. We always have room for improvement, and we just looked at scores, so we know there's room for improvement. We continue to look at achievement at the elementary level. ELA in math for students with disabilities in all grade levels. We need to look at supports for students with disabilities to attain meeting or exceeding achievement levels. That means looking at inclusion and pullout services. We need to look to decrease the number of students in the partially meeting categories through targeted instruction and support, and we need to look at student growth at the high school and the middle school levels. So while I said there's always, there's always opportunities for growth, I want to speak to the continuous improvement that we strive for in this district. So we are providing continued training on data, which includes screening tools and progress monitoring for our administrators so they can lead this work. We have PLC time, which is professional learning communities, to review data to determine the next steps for classroom instruction. We started to build data teams at the classroom level, but we lost funding this year from the federal government, so those are on hold until next year. We're still doing the data work, but we're doing it in a smaller, smaller way through professional learning communities. We are working with the Department of Elementary and Second Education to identify root causes for our needs assistance determination in special education. We are continuing our training on the science of reading and professional development for improving literacy. There is a link there so that you can see our plan if you are interested. We are also doing UDL, which is Universal Design for Learning, at the secondary level for the year 2526. We will be adding that to elementary next year. I'm going to give you a little more information about that in just a moment, because I know it's something that many of us aren't familiar with. At the elementary level, we have interventionists and instructional coaches at all three elementary schools. They are there to support our students and our educators. We use STAR data to identify small groups for targeted instruction. The middle school is also using STAR data to build intervention and enrichment groups during their WIN block. WIN stands for...
What I need.
What I need. Thank you. We have IXL for math to provide personalized instruction at the appropriate level. That's an adaptive program. It works with each student at their ability. We have Power Up for literacy, for targeted support in grammar, vocabulary, also known as word study at this level, and comprehension. The high school has implemented math and literacy labs, which provide short-term intervention courses. We also have IXL licenses, which are used during success block for individual support in math and literacy, and we use STAR 360 data to drive our instruction. Here's the fun part for me. We had professional development on Tuesday. It was a full day of professional development. Our teachers were engaged in UDL training, literacy training. We were working with several outside providers who came in and really supported all of our educators. So right here, this was the science of reading at the foundational level, so really looking at moving from leveled text to skill-based instruction. This was K through two. The next two slides, we worked with fifth grade, who has moved to a teaming model. So they have just asked for some additional support with their content to really make sure that they are doing the very best they can for their students. We had training with investigating history with the humanities teacher, teachers, and then in grades one through five, actually, I think it might have been K through five, that we were working on math stations. One through five, we were working on math stations. So as promised, I said I was going to speak a little bit to Universal Design for Learning, which is taking place at the middle school, which is the picture that you see here, and also at the high school. So Universal Design for Learning is something that, it has been around for a really long time. It is research-based. It is evidence-based. What it does is reduces barriers to learning that may exist for students. that may exist for students, removes unnecessary hurdles, makes learning accessible to a wider range of students, including those with disabilities, language barriers, and other challenges. It creates a more inclusive learning environment by acknowledging and accommodating the diverse needs of learners. It helps students with specific needs, but it also provides flexibility for all students, allowing them to engage with materials in ways that benefit them. It also gives them more choice and more agency. It shifts the focus from changing the learner to changing the curriculum and the learning environment, which is more effective for addressing diverse needs. This is the high school. It's a terrible picture from a terrible photographer, and that is myself. So I apologize for that, but I did my best. So our next steps. We are continuing to work on the development of district and building data teams. We will be selecting a core ELA program for K through six in January of 2026. We have an ongoing ELA curriculum review, and I just want to give a little plug to the community. You're going to be seeing surveys coming out. Please respond to them. We need your input. We are increasing and elevating interventions at all levels. We are training for the application of data at middle and high school. That's ongoing training with department heads and the coordinators. We are continuing our focus on reviewing state, national, and district data to close learning gaps and target instruction. And we will continue to analyze our instructional practices to determine their effectiveness. Questions?
Dr. Markelaitis, I know that the curriculum review was underway long before this data came out.
Yes.
Is there the ability to utilize the findings from this round of testing to help inform the curriculum review?
So we will definitely look at this round of testing. Really what has informed our review thus far is our scores from the past. And so we have... I'll just start from a couple of years ago when I arrived in Middleborough. And we looked at our foundational literacy, and we realized we had to make immediate changes. So we implemented a very scripted, structured phonics program in UFLY. You've heard me talk about this for the past few years. What I did not share with you tonight, because there is no comparison for it other than our own data, is our UFLY data is reaping great results. We hear it from our teachers. We see it in our students. The K teachers are seeing it when the students are leaving. The first-grade teachers are saying, wow. Second grade, third grade. Our second-grade students this year are the first group that has had it for all three years, K1 and 2. As you go up, they've had it for two years, one year. So each year, we are going to see the benefits of that program. Adding a core, full ELA program is going to enhance the work that is being done. It's really going to provide us an opportunity to have everybody start from a similar place. And then after full implementation of that program, we will look to fine-tune it and make sure that it works for us and all of our students, because they are different from year to year.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the committee? Alan.
Please bear with me, because I don't have an education background. I don't understand the different, like, the scores between like the eighth grade and the 10th grade. I have a 10th grade student and an eighth grade student.
Yeah.
And they likely have had the same experience going through school up to this point. So why is the 10th grade above state average? And the eighth grade so below state average? I mean, is ninth grade just awesome? Is that the difference?
We... No, no, that is not the difference, although ninth grade is awesome. We have awesome educators everywhere. The eighth grade test is the hardest test that our students will take. And I did tell you that they take four of them. Right? So we always see a dip in performance in eighth grade. There's also a maturity piece with students that by the time they get to 10th grade, they've sat for these tests, they know what to expect. And it's sort of the, I guess, solidifying all of the learning that has happened. It spirals. And so it is years and years of building up to this. And that is why 10th grade typically looks better. And that is statewide. It's not just Middleborough.
So if we, like, if we looked at the same data points from five years ago, we'd see a similar curve?
You would. You would. Yep.
Sue. Something that we talked about before, the subpopulation of our special ed students. And I see sprinkled in here some things that help to address that. I also am thinking about the recent special ed report that we received from the state and some significant concerns that have been expressed there. And I'm wondering how we are using the crossover information that we are receiving from that report and how we're going to really target our education of our students with special, our special needs students, so that they are performing closer, at least closer, to the state average of special needs students. How is that crosswalked?
So in multiple ways, to be honest with you. We have to first look at achievement. We have to look at curriculum. We have to look at instruction. There's a lot of pieces that are going to go into that. I think this is an opportunity for us. We have an acting director of special education, who I am working very closely with. Instead of us working in silos, as we have done in the past, we are really getting together to talk about how can we make this work for all of our students. For a long time, we have, in PD, special ed went here, general ed went here, and we didn't often do things together. We are changing that. And I'm very excited about those changes, because I think it gives us an opportunity to have everybody's input on what is best to move our students forward and close those learning gaps.
That's very good to hear. I also, you know, it also is reflective of some of the concerns that we've heard from families. And I would hope in the near future that we would see a report that's based, a presentation to us based on the report that came from the state, similarly of what are our next steps? What specifically are we doing to address the concerns that have come forward from that report that is now being reflected in our achievements on the MCAS?
Yeah, and that report is actually based on our data from 2023-24 school year. It is not based on our data from this year. Acting Superintendent Perron, acting director, special ed director Deutschman, and myself have several meetings coming up where we are going to discuss exactly what this is and what our next steps are. We have not solidified all that. We have to first listen to what the state has to say to us. And that is looking at root causes. We're doing a full root cause analysis with the state's guidance. And until we have that work done, I think presenting to you all about what we're going to do might be premature.
But I do hear your request that once that root cause analysis is completed...
I think we have that plan in place, but we just don't have the information yet.
Absolutely.
It would be good to hear about what the report had to say. Maybe it's in two pieces. What did the report have to say? So we can digest that a little bit. And then now what are we going to do about it? Because actually, that would give us some more time to really digest what is going on. And I guess a follow-up question would be, you referred to data before. Do you think that the subgroup data of our MCAS tests in the previous year would be that much different in terms of the comparison of special needs students to...?
So I did present that data last year. I presented it in exactly the same way last year. So we did have that data. I don't know that we focused on it as much as we should have last year.
I'm just saying, is it similar? Because when you said this was based, the report is based on the data from last year.
It is very similar.
So it's similar. Okay. That's all I...
It is similar. In fact, it's even more concerning this year, which means the state is doing what they should be doing.
Thank you.
Bringing that to our attention.
Hannah, go ahead.
So you mentioned that there was a huge focus on those partially meeting expectation students and kind of getting them to that meeting expectation level. But my concern is more the students who are not meeting expectations. And what are the next steps, the continuous improvement for those students? Because a lot of these things in place, like IXL, those have been around for quite some time.
Yeah.
So is there more programs that we're looking into to kind of assist those students to get them to where they need to be?
So yes, but I think we do have to wait until we work with the state on this, because we don't want to make a mistake and purchase something reactively. We want to make sure that we do our due diligence and really research what is going to support us in this work. And when I said we focused on those, it's not that we don't focus on the not meeting. It's just that we try to do those quick fixes. If we can move a student with one point up a category, that's something we can do pretty easily. The other ones require a little bit more attention.
Have you noticed any correlation between how students score in access and MCAS? Are they the ones who are achieving high on access? Are they also achieving on the MCAS?
No. So our students who take the access test, English is not their first language. MCAS is an English test. And so our students who... where English is their second language, they are doing well. And I actually can parse that out for you if you are interested. But, you know, they're right in that bucket. And so when you look at the data, there is a high-needs category, which includes students with disabilities, low-income students, English language learners, all of our subgroups. And in that category, it was higher than students with disabilities, but not the same as all students. That makes sense?
Yeah. Thank you.
I do appreciate the challenge that that brings of having the different... The different levels of need and the different levels that... Not everybody's the same. Everybody doesn't learn the same. And that makes what you're trying to do especially challenging. So I commend everybody for...
Thank you.
Analyzing the data, because the solution isn't going to be one-size-fits-all.
No, it's not. And it's also not going to be immediate. The solution is not immediate. This data has looked like this for quite some time. And so we have some work to do.
Any other questions from the committee? From the floor? Go ahead.
Hi, Bridgette Kearns. Thank you, Sue, for asking some of those questions on special ed. That was helpful, because that's kind of where my concern is. I understand MCAS is not really a reflection of our students' progress per se, but how our school is doing in helping our students achieve.
Yes.
And that's where we're seeing in that special ed population is really struggling. And I appreciate that you pointed out that this data is from what seems to be in the last six months or year, where we've kind of had this mass exodus of our special ed staff, from director to coordinators to teachers. How do we anticipate that this could have a direct impact on our students when we don't have, like, classroom? I mean, I've been listening to this parent for several weeks talk about, you know, not having a teacher in the classroom. So how do we expect our special education students to get adequate instruction to be successful if we don't even have those pieces in place?
So I can speak to part of this, but I certainly cannot speak to all of it.
Sure.
I am the director of curriculum and instruction. So I am responsible for all students, all learners in this district, and I take that to heart. The loss of staff is something we always want to avoid. But sometimes with a loss of staff, it affords us an ability to look at things differently and do things better. And I'm hoping that is what's going to happen here. I think, you know, if we look at the changes that have happened, we have brought in two really wonderful coordinators at the middle school and the high school level. The changes that they are already bringing are just wonderful. They are identifying some of our needs that may have been overlooked and addressing them immediately. So I am really optimistic about the changes that have happened. I do just want to say one other thing. Our educators in this district are fantastic. They are doing really wonderful work. And as Jess pointed out, it's not easy, because every classroom has, you know, 20 to 25 kids who learn differently. And our teachers really have to address all of those needs. And sometimes they are uber-prepared. And sometimes they're thrown a curveball, and they do their very best. And we are here to support them in this work. But I want you all to know that they are amazing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It is, I think that teachers that teach to the special needs population are some of the most wonderful teachers. And to the extreme of how they need to adjust to their teaching, more so because you don't have readily adaptable learners. And so that challenges so hard for those teachers, much more so than our educators who are teaching our gen ed population. And it's really important. And I did hear you say that some of that root cause or work that you need to do is looking at their IEPs and looking at whether you're doing pullout versus more in-class instruction, which is always important. And I think that working in that area, I understand how important in figuring those things out. And sometimes we get stuck in ruts, which, you know, working with a special needs population, you kind of go by, you just keep kind of prescribing the same thing, and you're not taking that individual need. So it's, I agree, that is a nice way to look at it when you're replacing staff that hopefully you're bringing in kind of a new mindset, a new shift, a new lens, and an opportunity to really look at what your practices are and kind of shake them up. So I think that was a great way to look at it. And hopefully, we'll see that in real time soon so that we can get some of these kiddos teachers.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Markelaitis.
Thank you. This is not my fault. Just leave. Calendars.
He just mentioned the Middleborough.
Okay. I will, yeah. Thank you. All right. Next up.
Okay, so we have the calendar for next year. We originally started with three drafts. And we still have three drafts. However, we pulled one and replaced it with a second draft. And so let me explain. The first, number two, that was in your Dropbox, we have changed that. The first draft... Yeah, draft, it was draft number two. And that one had an issue because the start date for the teachers was outside of the contract. They, we have to have their first start date no more than one week out before Labor Day. So we replaced number two. But I'll go back and we'll just go quickly through all three. So the first draft, and I'm really just going to start on the first day and the last day. Everything else in between could be moved around, and that's stuff that will happen. So in draft number one, first day of school is 9:02. The teachers are back on August 31st, which is a week before the holiday. So that works. The last day of school would be 6:21. So basically, that is draft number one, the short version. So basically, that is draft number one, the short version. And the new number two, we had in, in the original draft number two, as I said, it was the first day of teachers was the 24th of August, and we cannot do that contractually. So draft number two, again, the start date for teachers is 31st, students is the second. And, well, actually, I said I was not going to talk about stuff in the middle, but I, I am going to do that now. So in nine, in, in draft number one, in December, you see that on the, the 11th is a half-day. And the break starts from the 23rd of December and goes through the 31st. And again, the last day then is the 21st of June. In the new draft number two, again, we're on the 31st with teachers, the second with students, but we've taken the half-day from the 11th of December and made the 23rd of December a half-day instead of start of vacation. So in draft number one, there is a longer winter break by one day. Basically, that's the, the difference, other than the last day of school on draft number two, is six-seventeen. That gives us more play in terms of weather and all that, so just keep that in mind. And then on the third draft, the teachers come back on the first. The students' first day is the eighth, the day after Labor Day. And the last day is the 23rd. Contractually, we have folks that would be working till the 29th. And that's quite close to July. And if you add the, the five days, we're going to the 29th. So that is something to consider. It works if weather is fine. So those are your three.
Quick question on that, Mike. When you say contractually, you have people going to the 29th. Is that they are required for four days after the last day of five?
Some of them are five, yeah.
So if the last day of school is the 23rd, does that put them through the 30th?
Yeah, sorry.
So, and that's the 30th without a single snow day? So one snow day, and then are those folks contractually allowed to work into July, or are they not allowed to?
I'm not even sure I can answer that, but no, I don't, I don't believe, because then they're.
Usually the contracts are through June.
Yes.
Yeah. Any questions before we just have a discussion about the?
I think I'm being thick, so I'm sorry. But I don't understand how you can have a first day of school on nine-two and then one draft you can finish on six-seventeen and the other draft you finish on six-twenty-three.
It's the difference of the 23rd of December.
There's, there's a couple of things, yeah. It's because we moved the half-day.
Because, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
We moved the half-day that was on the 11th.
Okay.
And we, we moved that and took away the 23rd.
Okay.
So it's one less vacation day.
One less vacation day. And then I believe a weekend, and don't forget, Juneteenth is on a Saturday. And so we would honor that on the Friday, the 18th, so that wouldn't be a, a, a day there. The other thing to keep in mind, I'm sorry, just, is that the first is a voting day. And that was another thing that we had to work around. You can't obviously have school, we could have teachers in, which we do on a couple of the drafts. But we could not have students on, it is an official voting day where they'll be closed. So between the late start or the late date of Labor Day, the contractual obligations, the voting day, and then the end-of-year contractual, were what gave us the limitations on how many different drafts we could give you.
Any other questions for Mike before we discuss?
Okay, it's only on one of the drafts, but having a professional day on the 23rd of.
Which month?
December. I don't know how effective a professional day on the 23rd of December is going to be.
Something to consider.
And I think that that, given what we've just heard, I think that that's a real consideration.
So we are, this year, the students are in the 23rd, we're off the 24th, but it's, it, the same number of vacation days. So we, we honor, to honor the 20.
I understand it. I, I just wanted to point out that, given what we're hearing, I think having a professional development day on the 23rd of December is not wise.
My concern is that Juneteenth, with having a half-day on the 21st, I mean, I don't, I don't foresee a lot of students coming to school that day. Being that it's the last day after the holiday, the Juneteenth holiday. I think we had a similar situation this year, if I recall too, with the, the 20 is coming back for that one day. I don't think they're, I mean, I haven't talked to the principals, but I don't think the, the, I think the absences were quite high.
Half-day after a weekend, regardless of whether it's a long weekend or not, is always. Half-day last day.
To Sue's point, I do understand what you're saying about the 23rd of having a half-day right before Christmasy.
Alan, did you have a question?
No.
Okay.
Tough choices.
Sarah.
Sarah. Sarah Zogoris. So a couple of questions. So, well, just something to mention is Labor Day is really late this year, so that's why. So we're actually starting before Labor Day, even though it's the second, the Labor Day is actually the seventh.
Yes.
Will this be made public for people to look at after this meeting?
So one of the things we did last year is we put out a poll to allow people to weigh in. So my next question actually to the committee was, do we want to wean it down, any of these things, before we put something out there for a vote? But yes, what we did last year was put things out there and let people weigh in and get feedback before we had a final vote.
Yeah, so last year, there was the three, and people gave their opinions on three.
And then we narrowed it down to two.
I don't think so. I think we saw all three and we voted for three from the Google, the Google form, if I remember correctly. There was people voted on three different ones.
But then we narrowed it down to two from that feedback.
Right.
And then we went back again.
But you still gave, you still gave people the opportunity on three to give their feedback.
Yeah, but I don't know if we, i- if the committee as a whole has concerns about one of these, then maybe we can make it a little easier to get more direct feedback.
Okay, but these will be available soon?
I believe the materials are already posted in that folder. I can show everybody where that folder is again, so what we have here.
Is it on the Middlebar Public School site?
It's on the Middlebar Public School sites, on the school committee, under Meetings and Materials. For today, I think all three drafts are available there.
And so when is the final vote on this?
This was the first presentation, so we have the discussion today, and then we do the poll, and then we get the feedback from the poll, and then we would have one more.
So probably like January, February?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
January or February, yeah. Because we only have one more meeting before the end of the year anyway, so. So I personally have concerns about draft three. I feel like it's pushing the start up relatively late. And I do worry about extending into, abutting against July, because I know in other districts, if you go too late, then you end up in that position in like April, where you're like, oh, we have to cut a day off of a vacation week in order to make sure we don't go too far until the end of the year. So my concern about draft three is not preference about starting before or after Labor Day. It's the risk at the, the end of the year of us possibly abutting against a contractual stop date and having to go to school on what would otherwise be a vacation day. Anybody else share that concern?
I don't share it, but I.
You understand it.
There you go.
I'm not willing to make a, a stand for stopping after Labor Day issue.
I still have the real concern about, we only have five professional days, and I really think you're just playing giving up one by having it on the 23rd of December.
Okay. Chris?
I would say, I would like to see drafts two and three move on. If you look, draft one starts the same as two, but you're, you're still ending only two days before if we go back after Labor Day. So I would say, even though I prefer to go back after Labor Day, I understand your concerns, but I think those are the two that, to me, seem the most reasonable.
Two and three, even though two has the professional development before winter break?
Yes.
How would you, as an educator, feel about a professional development day before winter break?
I, depends on the PD. But teachers and professionals can kind of hold together the, the holiday enjoyment better than if it's a full day of class. So a half-day with PD seems like it would be more productive than having a full day.
Trying to get through the whole day before vacation. Okay, fair. Anyone else? All right, so I know last year, one of the things we did was we also pulled the teachers, not just parents. So I do think in this instance, there's a lot of need for pulling the, the educators in the district to weigh in on, specifically weighing in on the half-day and the, the end of school. So I would ask that before we post anything for, for a, a survey, that we first double-check the, the folks that are contractually required to stay for the five days after and find out for sure if their contracts included can't work into July. If we do find out that those folks who have to work the five days after are not allowed to work into July, do we feel that draft three is even viable? Because that doesn't even give us one day, one snow day, one emergency weather day, one anything.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a concern. There's no clear winners, you know? I'm going to kind of defer to the teacher feedback and the public feedback, to be honest with you.
Yeah, okay.
Because I don't see any clear wins here. I, I, I didn't think of it until Sue said it, but I absolutely share her concern about professional days, especially coming on the heels of what we just said, just like she said. So yeah, I'd be very interested to hear what teachers have to say, what our contractual obligations are and what the public has to say. Yeah, it's just, this is a rough year.
Can we also solicit feedback from non-student-facing staff and faculty too?
Absolutely.
I think.
All staff, yeah.
Yeah, they should be.
Understood. Agreed completely. All staff. So before we ask Sean to help with a survey of the public, may I propose that we start by, one, double-checking the contracts, and, two, starting the poll to the staff in the district about that half-day? Because we can use that regardless of which calendar we end up with start and end date. So if we can do the poll through the staff in the district about the half-day on the 23rd of December and double-check the contract. And then once we know if draft three is a viable option, if it is a viable option, then we can proceed with a poll. If it's not, then we would have to proceed with a poll of, one or two doesn't really change much in terms of the start date, but we can come back to a poll to the public once we know for sure about the contract. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Please.
We should be honest that if we pick one, the last day of school is going to be the 17th anyway.
May I make a comment from the student body?
Yes, please.
This is both kind of from what I heard.
Hey man, you're a senior.
I am a senior. Well, last year, I believe the last day of school, it was a Monday. And from what I heard, I mean, I am a bit of a hypocrite speaking here because I was on a college tour that day, but not a lot of people actually wanted to go. And I don't think a lot of those people went. And the teachers seemed to share a similar feeling of not feeling that the day was worth getting up to go to. But they went, and the limited amount of teachers I've talked to is, their opinion is they liked going back after Labor Day. So I'm sure the survey or the talks you have will illuminate that, but just thought I'd put it on your table now.
Thank you. And I do think we have to recognize that even if we go with draft two, you get one, one snow day and you're, you're back to the Monday anyway. It's just a question of what do you plan for, so.
It doesn't even have to be a snow day anymore. It can be a, a high-wind day.
High-wind day, yep.
Power up to the schools, you know?
Please.
Kim Jones again. Two questions. With the Juneteenth day being on a Saturday, and you mentioned having to give the Friday, which is very common with holidays at home, weekends. Do we also do that for Veterans Day, if it falls on a Saturday or a Sunday, that they get the Friday? Or Monday? I don't remember.
Yes, usually if it's a Sunday, you take it Monday, honor it on Monday, and Saturday is Friday. With Juneteenth on a Saturday, we do not have to. If it's a Sunday, we have to do it on Monday.
My other thought, which I know other state districts do it differently than us, is has there ever been consideration of getting rid of the February and April vacation and doing a one-week in March, similar to what college kids do? I know in other parts of the country, this works quite well and allows that time to start after Labor Day consistently and still get out before the high heat of the summer comes in. Just ideas to throw up.
And I do think that we, we talked about that, might have been before I was on the committee. And I think some of the concerns that were raised with changing it is making a change in this town, but without other agencies and towns, makes childcare during vacation weeks very difficult sometimes. So the areas that I know do that, it tends to be a breadth of towns that do it, so that those types of things come into play. So it's, I'm not opposed to the idea, I just think it's difficult to do it as a single town without having all the resources for parents in that week in March.
It's also true that, for colleges, that they have a vacation at the mid-winter, after the holidays, for almost a month. So trading off our week and then going back and having nothing until March, I think is a, is a really long, is a long stretch. And I believe that other states that go on a different cycle, they also incorporate some summer days. So it's just a very, very different cycle. The same number of days, just a very different cycle.
All right, anything else on this, Mike?
No.
All right, so we'll find out about the contract, we'll start the poll on the teachers, and then once we know about the contract, we can figure out how to properly poll everyone else. All right. Does that end your report there?
It does.
Mr. Superintendent in acting. Okay, so next item is the subcommittee updates. And the first item is the reorganization of the subcommittees. I know, again, Sue, you did a lot of work on this, leading up to this meeting. One of the things that I did speak with you about is the fact that, as of right now, we are a committee of five, and so a quorum is three, and therefore, we cannot have any subcommittees with three people on them for the time being. So that is something that we have to keep in mind. Sue, I'd love to hear your presentation that you, I know you prepared on the, the subcommittees.
Yes, so when I contacted you just, it was that, that we are, we are also, we can't have more than two right now until we fill that position. And also with Zeke no longer on the board, that he was the chair of some and he participated in some. So I took a look and I have. This also came as a result of some conversations about, in our policy subcommittee, that we thought that maybe we could combine policy and, policy and protocols, protocols and operations as one. And it gave me the thought that I spoke to Alan about, that maybe we could combine master plan facilities and equipment into one. And so as a result of those, that thinking, what you have in your hand is a reconsideration of populating the different subcommittees. The one that remains without a second person is budget. And it's, the second person is TBA, because we have some technicalities that we need to follow up on around who that second person might be. I think we have a little bit of time. Mike and Chris, before the next budget meeting is when? Not for a little while, right?
Looks like, uh.
Probably December, huh?
Yeah, December 9th.
Yeah, so, and the question can be resolved before then, and we can figure out who that second person would be. So I thought I'd bring this forward as a proposed reorganization.
Someone.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. What do folks think about where you ended up?
So I just, I want to say, I mean, I know I was the second member on the budget subcommittee, and obviously for extenuating circumstances, the timeline of when the budget has to be done, I mean, I'm all for giving birth during the budget presentation if you want me to, but I have no issue also attending the December 9th meeting until we figure this out, at least.
I think the question that we have is, can be resolved fairly quickly, and then we can make the decision about who the second person is going to be, but thank, thank you.
Just in case there was.
I'm just saying, it's not a big, it's not a big question, it just needs to be answered.
It would certainly add some excitement to the meeting.
That's true.
I'm not sure that this life word would agree with that.
I think I would prefer, if you are willing, that we, we reorganize to keep Shannon on budget, and then we can have another adjustment once we know who the new member is and make some changes as, as befits. But because we did also talk about the potential of figuring out if we can stay at five, we got to make sure that we have somebody else on budget, because it is.
Yeah, if there's like an extenuating circumstance we need to meet, we need to have a two people.
Yes, I agree. So my other question and concern, though, is negotiations, because negotiations does sometimes, not always, lead to a large number of meetings, and I know budget does as well. So Chris, just in terms of, of availability with your schedule around work and all of those things, do you think those are two committees that you could have the time to dedicate to?
Yeah, I can make it work.
Okay. Anyone else have any thoughts? All right, so if everybody is agreeable, then we can vote to, I would prefer to vote. I know in the past, people have just been informed, but I would prefer to vote to accept these proposed reorganizations of the subcommittees with Shannon in as the second member of budget for.
Intern.
For the foreseeable months. So I would entertain a motion to approve this reorganization of the subcommittees.
So there is a motion on the table already? So we just have to amend it?
Yes, thank you.
To include Shannon as the second member of budget?
Appreciate, thank you.
Which is what you just did, so I second.
The amendment.
I second the amendment. So now we'll vote on the amendment?
Can I?
Yes, please.
Sorry, that's an amendment. On that, I volunteer to be the second person on the.
On budget?
On budget. So to take that, you know, off of her.
Okay, so we're going to table, I think is the right word, the amendment.
I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna rescind my original motion, and we're gonna start all over.
All right. So I will then entertain a motion to accept the proposed reorganization with replacing TBA on budget with Sue.
Someone.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Sue, thank you for the work to propose this.
Also, under that, when I put this on, I was planning on making, having us be sure that we have meetings of those, all of those meeting committees before the next school committee meeting.
So I do think that having as many as possible, I know with the Thanksgiving break, that schedules that week get tough, but I do agree and hope that as many as possible can meet in terms of negotiations. We're gonna talk at the end of this meeting with Mr. Perone over here, because we got to get those scheduled sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
So yes, if the chairs of the different committees could make sure that if you have not met already, that we do so. I appreciate that. All right. Next item is public relations, and I think that Sue, you were and continue to be the chair of that committee?
I am. I, I just wanted to report that we did have our initial meeting, and we discussed the goals that had been presented to us of enhancing communication, both with stakeholders within the community, as well as the various branches and parts of our local government. And we came up, began to build strategies of how we might do that. We will meet again and solidify those and bring them forward as a recommendation.
Great, thank you. And one item to mention that kind of relates to policy that we'll be discussing is the consideration of that public relations also connecting with the, the student population, because as you will see when we get to policy JIB, that's something that'll come up for discussion.
I'm very excited about that.
Great, wonderful. Anything else, Sue?
That's, it's.
All right, wonderful, and thank you for having that meeting and getting everything started. So that brings us to policy, everybody's least favorite portion of the agenda, I know, but it is important work, and hopefully we can get through this in the least painful method possible. So with that being said, let's see if this plays nice. Do we let it shut down? Would you two like to do a little song and dance for us? I am, and I am on duplicate. Here we go. All right, so I know it's small, I'm gonna try to, somebody over there hit focus on that thing. That's a little bit better. Okay, I'm not gonna go based on my eyes, because, no. So this was feedback that we received, and this auditorium doesn't facilitate it as best, but we will attempt to bring up the policies as we talk about them moving forward. When we're in a bigger screen, it'll be a little bit easier. So the first policies, the first two policies for first reads, they have a caveat to them. So the state, as everyone knows, changed MCAS, voted, all of that. And part of that came around just a few months ago, or beginning of the school year, that DESI is requiring every district to send them by December 31st their policies on graduation requirements and competency determinations. So we do have as our first reads today, policy IKF for graduation requirements and IKFE for competency determinations. And while today is just a first read, I just do need to make a note that when these continue in, if these continue into December, we will need to expedite them to ensure that with only one meeting in December, we get the policies voted and approved in order for them to be submitted by the end of the year to DESI. So because of that, I'm just gonna quickly touch on what we did with the graduation requirements. Principal Branigan and Dr. Mark Alitis created a draft based on all of the work that they had done last year, plus some of the additional information that came about of just a general protocol for the district to follow. And then I used that information to populate the templates that MAS C came out with and make adjustments where necessary to utilize the information that Dr. Mark Alitis and Principal Branigan put together. So you'll notice for IKF graduation requirements, this one is in that everything here came from MAS C, unless it's a blue highlight. Blue highlight means MPS, Middle Borough specific. So you can see the credits are different, which classes are required are different. All of these are in the program of studies that MHS publishes and the handbook already, so these are not, this is nothing different and nothing new for anyone within the district. It's just updating the policy to match, or creating a policy that we will add to our policy manual that matches what we already have in those other documents. So you can see here, three years lab site and four years of PE, all of that. And then we were all slightly amused by the credit for foreign study. We figured might as well keep it if we ever get foreign exchange programs up and running in the high school again. Hey, look, we already have a policy ready and waiting, but it is not something that will tap into within our district for a very long time. Any questions on this policy? And it goes hands in hand with IKFE, which is the competency determination. This one is a little different, this one needed a little more MPSing. So you'll see everything at the beginning is rewritten based on, again, the information that Dr. Mark Alitis and Principal Branigan put together. The raw data of the MAS C model policy is posted at the end and highlighted in yellow. So this just covers a lot of the same information that we already put out at the end of last year, that we approved with the new determinations for graduation. It includes the, the methodology, that you'll notice that certain things are Xed out, that is thanks to a meeting we just had at four o'clock today to make some adjustments to this, so those are real time changes that you'll notice. And then this includes a minimum passing grades, and then the competency determinations are grade nine and grade 10 English, Algebra I or Algebra II in geometry, and that's because if you are a student who takes Algebra I and middle school, then the requirement is geometry and Algebra II. If you don't take Algebra I in middle school, it's Algebra I and geometry. Science is biology, and then US history, beginning in 2027, is US history one and two. And then there's the additional considerations for students with disabilities, multilingual learners, and then transfer students. There is also a section on the appeals process, which is something that the state requires us to have. So all of this is something that I do urge you, if you didn't already get a chance to review, please review carefully, because we will need to expedite it at the meeting in December. Any questions?
I have a quick one regarding the classes listed.
Yes.
As of this year, 10th grade students are allowed to take AP United States History instead of US two. So will that count? If taking APUSH instead of US two, will that still fulfill that competency requirement?
Yep. Making a note. Okay. All right. The next first read policy is JIB, which is Student Involvement in Decision Making. And this is the reason why Mason and Jackson are still here. So this policy doesn't have a lot of changes from my review with MAS C, but there is this student advisory committee that is part of this policy. And so I just invite our representatives to speak a little bit about what they've done so far this year to create their student advisory committee.
Thank you. So I won't go on about all the legal stuff and all the jargon and everything. Basically, the Cliff Notes version is members of the school committee will meet with members of our student body to discuss basically anything that is determined to be needed to be discussed at that time, whether it be a policy, a, like, I don't think we'll have any interest in budgets, but if you wanted to ask us questions, we'd be sure to answer them. But, so the first step, obviously, was to find members to fulfill the five slots. Jackson and I have already taken two, and we will be serving as co-chairs, because it, in the fine print of the law, it says the chairs of the committee will be non-voting members of the school committee, so that will be us. And to fill the remaining three slots, we picked the member at larges from the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade classes. And I would like to make it known that even though the members of the committee are all high school students, we are open to discussion from middle school and elementary school students and families as well. The only reason the high school students were selected is because it's frankly the easiest to coordinate a meeting with people you go to school with. But again, if you have anything that you want the students to, to think about, talk to the chair, talk to any member of the school committee, and we'll get that through. And basically, our, not really our agenda, but our plan is to meet outside of the times we meet with school committee members, to get a head start on policies that are coming up. Like, if there is a school committee meeting on a Thursday, and, well, next one will be in December, I hope to try and, we have the success blocks and the directed studies, and five minutes after school in a random teacher's classroom that we can just ask to meet in, and we can talk, look over things that are on the agenda, and come prepared with something to say if there is something that is deemed important.
I, could I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Are you saying that's when you would meet with your fellow students?
Yes.
Or is that, okay.
The meeting.
I was gonna say.
The meeting with.
Well, we'd be thinking that's when you're gonna meet with us.
Yeah.
That might not work.
Yeah. The meetings with members of the committee, however it is deemed to be done, that is something that Jackson and I will help make work, and we will serve as the communication with Bram to figure out how that will go.
Thank you. I do know that there are some options that can be considered, you know, so either the subcommittee can meet with the, either the subcommittee can meet with the entirety of the student advisory committee, or we can work out some different options and then have a presentation every couple of months of specific things that were discussed, as well as allow the kind of ad hoc things coming up on the fly of, we were discussing this, that was on the agenda, and here's the feedback from the student advisory committee. So I look forward to further engagement, and Sue, I know you were excited about that as well.
I am, and I think the more, these are the more structured means of communication from, for different constituencies and different stakeholders, that I think is something that will really help move us together forward as a district, and I really look forward to it.
And one last thing to add for it is, I don't want this just to be a, we spew all of our opinions about everything that we find on the agenda, that I, I, I will send you guys a lot of emails asking, hey, what is this, what is, what does this word mean? What are, is at stake here? But I also want questions from members of the school committee.
Absolutely.
During those policy meetings, during those like negotiations, whatever, to ask the students questions of, over what they're actually interested in, because we hear a lot, I hear a lot about students and what they want to see done in the school. I feel like this is the perfect opportunity to get that done directly.
Wonderful. Could I just ask for you to share the names of the other three members?
Absolutely. So as I stated earlier, me and Jackson will be serving as the co-chairs, as we are the student school committee reps. And the other three members will be Megan Kennedy, who is the 11th grade member at large, Ken Mentee, who is the 10th grade member at large, and Rose Price, who is the 9th grade member at large.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions for, go ahead, Sue.
I wonder if there's some kind of a equivalency of a list serve with other student advisory groups from other high schools, or some way to get connected to find, that have this up and running and kind of, and this really worked, and this, something you might want to reach out and find out about.
So I actually had a, this is a quick anecdote, I actually had a very entertaining conversation at work about this, because one of the people who I work with, he is actively involved in Plymouth North Student Council. And he just recently found out about this as well. So he and his school created one and made it work. And they have a lot more strict rules that they follow. So I can see where they're getting theirs from, and we can build from there. And I'm sure there's something on...
I believe there's actually a, a, a student rep state group, similar to MAS C. So we can try to find out if there are references and, and resources for, for you all to reach out to, to, to find manuals and protocols and, and other people to talk to, so.
Yeah, and happy to do that within the subcommittee. I just thought that's a good role for them also from their side to be talking directly with some of their student colleagues.
We'll find another acronym to have to know what they stand for.
Because that's what we need, is more acronyms.
Right, right.
But I, I do think that you should peruse the open meeting law, because I'm pretty sure somewhere in there, there's a rule that you can't give your mother a hard time about this stuff over dinner.
Too late. All right, thank you both. I appreciate that, and I know you two both are anxious to get to homework, hopefully.
Likewise, I think that's part of open meeting law, that you can't harass your son.
All right, so moving on, thank you, gentlemen. I am going to switch over to the next round of policies. These are our second reads, so these are the same lists that we brought up. For those who are looking for the files, these were the first reads that we talked about at the meeting on October 23rd, so they're all in the materials folder for October 23rd. So Policy KBA is School Parent Relation Goals. And following the same convention that we've done to date, or I've done to date, the, the yellow are the changes that I have made to our current policy based on the MAS C guidance. You'll notice a lot of what it is in this one is just incorporating better language to note guardians, not just parents, and to use some improved language for other terms throughout, but it doesn't change the, the gist of the policy. So is there any questions or discussion that anybody would like to have on Policy KBA? All right. KBBA is Non-Custodial Parents' Rights. These, again, minor changes. In general, you'll notice throughout that there are times where the, the law may have been referenced within the, the body of the policy. And the, the trend is, don't reference the specific law in the body of the policy, just reference it in the legal reference, because we can update the legal references without having to go through all of the rigmarole of updating a policy. So anytime you see that, usually it's been fixed in the legal references below. So in this instance, this is something that I know everybody already follows, and, and there are strict rules and procedures that are already in place, but this one just kind of changes anything relating to a regulation or law, and then added everything in to the legal references. Any questions or discussion on KBBA? All right, KBE. KBE is slightly different because KBE goes right along with KJA. So KBE was our policy that had been relations with parent organizations, and then KJA was relations with booster organizations. And the recommendation from MAS C is to change KBE to be relations with parent slash booster organizations, just to organize things a little better and for consistency. So there are some differences that are significant, but the, the gist of everything comes down to talking about communication and making sure that the, there is availability of those organizations to meet at the schools, to be recognized, and to have that information. There's also parent organizations such as our Masba and our MPABC should obtain the 501(c)(3) status, which I know both of those organizations have. And just put in our fun raffles information, just to remind everybody, if you do a raffle, what those rules are. And then all of the legal references were updated as well. So there you are. If you have any questions, please let me know. Okay, moving along. KBG is Parent Advisory Councils. This would be a new policy for MPS. This is just noting that the law requires certain committee councils to be formed. One of them is what's referred to often as CPAC, which I know is active in our district. And then there's also that English learner or multilingual learner parent advisory committees. And that one is based on the percentage in the district. I did not get an opportunity, but I will ask Director Mark Alitis if we have a percentage. I know that they've had all of the outreach and those events, but I will check in to see if we have a multilingual advisory committee. I know that we've had lots of, of events to reach out to those families, but I don't know if we have an advisory. So I'll double check on that one. And whether or not we reach the percentage that requires us to have one. Any other questions about that one? Okay. KBD, Public's Right to Know. So in this instance, the major changes that we're hearing is relating to the public records, noting confidentiality, and then, again, just making sure that we're referencing parent guardian throughout the, the document. Any questions? All right. Rolling right along, KDD, News Media Relations, News Releases. I did meet with the Acting Superintendent, our Director of Communications, just to double check that there's nothing in this one that goes against any practices. So in this instance, we did make some changes here, just to specify that, in general, media is responsibility of the superintendent or designee. MAS C does say that there is a process, there could be a process with school specific, but the practice in our district is always that everything goes through central office. And the, the discussion was to keep it that way. So you can see in here are some of the changes that we made based on what was there previously and what the current recommendation, the current request from our Director of Communications is to just have everything come through the superintendent's office. Any questions on that one? All right. KE, Public Complaints. So there were not many changes to this one, other than this additional paragraph, that complaints will be investigated fully and fairly, and for complaints to be submitted in writing, but everything else is still in line with what was previously posted and made available in our policies. Any questions? Okay. KLJ, Relations with Planning Authorities. This would be a new one. This one I mentioned at the first read, I found to be interesting. And I think this is a good one to, to fall under the advice of our, our Master Planning and Facilities Subcommittee here. But basically, we should have participation in the, the planning functions that could affect the schools. So it's pretty straightforward, but it basically just says, we, we need to know when, when somebody's planning something that could infect us. All right. LB, Relations with Other Schools and School Districts. So this policy basically just says that we're gonna play nice with others, and that, in addition, that we have cooperative programs and collaboratives that we participate in. The only thing that's specific in this one that really changed was at the recommendation of a note in the MAS C policy to specifically list the, the different organizations or schools that we're affiliated with. I double checked with the folks in the central office again to see if we missed any, but these are the organizations. So Bristol Aggie, BP, and the Reeds Collaborative are the organizations that others, that students within our, our district are predominantly able to take advantage of. All right, if no questions on that one. LBC, Relations with Non-Public Schools. So this one was just an interesting learning opportunity for me. So there is this process that if a private school wants to have students within our district attended, there is an approval process. And there is a checklist that I've confirmed with our registrar that they have available to them to go through, that if somebody were to want to open a private school, we kind of vet it to make sure that it meets the standards that we would want the students in our town to take advantage of. So there were a lot of changes to this policy based on the MAS C recommendations, and most of what I did in reviewing this was to just make sure that these are already practices that were in place in central office, and that there wasn't anything we needed to tweak. All right. And then our final policy for today, in our second read, is Student Teaching and Internships. And this is LDA. And there's, again, just minor changes to the language to call us a district, not a system, and that the school administrators will ensure their procedures for evaluating student teachers. So, any questions on this? All right. So with that being said, unless there is any objection, we'll push these for the third read and vote at the next meeting, but at the same time, we will continue to look at the other three that we talked to for first reads, and those may need an expedited vote just to make sure that we can implement our, our processes and get everything submitted to DESI. All right. Thank you all for policy review for the day. Item number eight is just a reminder, I believe, when this went on the agenda, Sue, we're just reminding everybody that we have our annual conference coming up next week, this 12th, 13th, and 14th. I know a few of us are attending, and I look forward to getting a chance to attend those sessions. And I always find it a very valuable experience, not just for learning, but also for networking. And everybody knows it's always great to hear from other districts how they're handling, handing, handling things, and either learn new ways, new ideas, or to just commiserate. Was there anything else you wanted to address on that one? Anyone? All right. Next is the Consent Agenda. So I'm just going to read off what we have on the Consent Agenda, because there are a, a number of things here. So the first item for the Consent Agenda is the donation of two American flags for the flagpoles at the Mary K. Good and the Henry B. Berkland Elementary Schools, and those were donated by Plymouth Pest Control. Item B is Approval of the Meeting Minutes from September 25th and, yes, please.
On that, may I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I would like to propose that we strike all reference to interim superintendent and replace it with acting superintendent within those minutes.
So item B was Approval of the Meeting Minutes.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were on.
Yep, nope, that's fine. So item B, Approval of the Meeting Minutes for September 25th and October 9th. And I am going to amend those to, as Sue recommended, that we request those get updated to, we'll be voting to approve them as acting, not interim. Item C is Approval of Warrants, as posted in our shared Google Drive. And then item D is Grant Information for the 2025 to 2026 school year. This isn't something we've done before, but there is a policy that says that all grants must be approved by the school committee before they can be expended. And I know that was something that, Mike, you said came around in the finance community of the school districts as well.
Yes.
So I'm just going to quickly read out what we are going to be voting on and the dollar amount. So an Innovative Pathways Grant for $50,000. Title I for $534,000. 534,497. Title II, $69,392. Title III, $10,020. Title IV, $35,985. 240 IDEA, $908,942. 262 IDEA, $23,720. Youth Works, $135,887. Connecting Activities, $3,000. Supporting Students' SEL Behavioral and Mental Health and Wellness, $44,910. Comprehensive School Health Services, CSHS Affiliated, $16,750. Workforce Planning and Resource Development, $24,000. I will pause briefly to just thank all of those in our district who apply for these grants and manage them. I know they are a significant part of helping our budget and allowing us to do what we need to do to operate. So thanks to all of those folks who applied and did all of the work to get us these grants. Any questions on any of the items? On the Consent Agenda? Go ahead, Sue.
Okay. So agreed completely. I think that we've done a wonderful job, and that our, our grant activity has increased over the years, and that has served us very well. Obviously, Title I, Title II, Title III, Title IV, those are things that are kind of integrated into those programs when we're doing our, when the presentations are done. I'm, out of interest, I'm really interested to know in terms of the Innovative Pathways, because I'm assuming that the, that it's, those are, that's a program that we've tried to really be growing, as well as, I don't know as much about the Youth Works, and maybe I, I, maybe it was told to us before, but now seeing the dollars that we're getting for grants, as well as the workforce planning and resource. I'm wondering if we could have copies of the grants, or some summary of, and this is how we're enhancing what we're doing as a result of receiving these grants. It's, for me, it's a way that we, as a school committee, can champion the kinds of growth and enhancements that we're making for what's happening in the system.
We talked about this because we wanted to get him on quickly.
Yep.
But we talked about the fact that we have no backup as to what these are and what they do, so we're gonna have a synopsis of what it covers, but I can give you more detail.
That'd be great.
And maybe even a report out from the different, because some of these are by the same people. Kevin Avatable has a number of these on the, one thing I just mentioned on the bottom that he applies for. So we could have a, a report out on what actually is happening with those dollars.
Yeah, it'll be great to see how we're making enhancements through these grants. And it really gives more credit, gives that much more credit to the people that are, when you see what's happening with the dollars and cents.
All right. But let's get them approved so that all those dollars and cents can be spent legally. So with that being said, I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Approved unanimously, thank you. On the agenda, we have a list of retirements, resignations, and new hires. It's wonderful to see a number of the slots get filled in the same amount of time as it gets to go between meetings. So thank you to everyone in the district who worked so hard to, to fill those spots. And then we have some informational items, so as...
I, I have questions on that.
Yep, go ahead.
Well, first a comment on the retirements. Again, there are names in there that I just think...
Would you like me to read them out?
Yeah. So I'm ga... So, MKG Teacher, Michelle Bowden, Julie Garber, um, MKG ESP Teacher, Paula Hart, and Joanne Tarkanian, uh, all who have given real dedicated service to Middleborough, and, um, I think it's good we pause for a moment to really thank them-
Yes.
...for what they've done.
I agree, thank you for that reminder.
And then, secondly, I just want to ask Mike, uh, we've had this conversation in passing, but, uh, with, just how are we doing in filling slots? I, I know that we've been having resignations and all, and I'm sure it must be a stress, uh, so I'm just wondering how that works going.
Yeah, we're filling them, unfortunately, we're losing them at the same time, some of them are new hires that we're losing, um, so we just keep posting and interviewing and filling the positions, and Dr. Mark Alitis is right, we have benefited from some, in the sense that we've hired and, and gotten some really good candidates, uh, and it's just a, it's just the way it is right now, um, the vacancies are coming, and I can't explain it, but it's, it's, and again, it's not unique to Middleborough, especially in the, in this area especially.
Um, okay, thank you. I, I do want to follow up by saying, I know that there's been, as far as, uh, people leaving the system, there have been a lot of questions about our turnover, and I did, and we are going to have to do a more in-depth look at, uh, our teacher retention, but I did look it up on the DESI site, and we are still above state average for retaining our teachers, um, and we want to improve, and we dropped just a tiny bit last year, and I know we're doing things to try to improve, and I'm not saying that, that we shouldn't keep trying to improve, but, um, when you see these names, you, you start thinking that we are really, you know, dropping significantly, but we still, uh, we're, I believe, we're 86.4% retaining our teachers, um, which is, um, like, a 4.4% above the state average, so, um, you know, we aren't dropping precipitously, but we do need to keep moving forward.
I think we should repeat that, we are above the state average in retention, and we have been for quite some time, so the idea that people are fleeing the system is a false one, and it's a negative perception.
Yeah, and, um, and that's specifically for teachers, um, I haven't found a good way that we compare in terms of staff positions, uh, there is one for principals, but if so, you know, we only have five principals, so if you lose, I think it's five.
You lose one, it's 20%.
Yeah, so, and then you compare that to some other town that has 10, uh, so it's a tough, it's a tough comparison, uh, but how, how we are doing with our executive staff and our staff, it's, um, I've been trying to figure out a way that we take a look at that comparatively speaking, uh, but at least with our teachers, and I echo what you say, we want to improve, of course, um, but, uh, we are above the state average.
Okay. And I know this is something that's important to all of us, and we've talked about a number of times, so I do think it's important for us to, to keep, keep focus on it, and, um, you know, keep, keep our eye out for any trends that we can-
And Mike, will you be calling together that exit interview group?
Excuse me?
The exit interview advisory committee, we were gonna get that started again, are you, are you going to pull that group together?
Yep.
Great, thank you.
All right. So the last, um, item on the agenda before adjournment is just informational for fundraiser, so there's the Memorial Early Childhood Center PTA fundraiser for their Change War, I know this is always a, a fun one for the students, and that's November 12th through the 19th. I always look forward to hearing about what fun activities they do for the, uh, classes that are successful, and then, uh, John T. Nichols Middle School is having a veterans' relief project, which I think is a wonderful idea, and there's donations of goods accepted for that project, so please keep your, your eyes out for the information that's gonna be coming out for those, um, to participate as possible. And with that being said, yes?
Tim Hynett, 5Ks on November 23rd, 10:00 AM, at the high school.
There you go, and information is definitely out there, um, I know it went out on, uh, Parent Square, for anyone who is interested in participating, and you don't have to run, you can walk. Anybody have any other informational items to share? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So approved! Have a good night, everyone.